We're getting a town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. If I may have your attention, please, the meeting is now in order. Please, may I have your attention, please? The meeting is in order. If you have a conversation, would you take it outside, please? We already done the roll call. We had our executive session, so we're at the pledge allegiance, and I will lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic through which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, I have none. Does anyone have a public announcement they'd like to bring up? Seeing none, we'll move on to the town manager report, and before he starts, he's already asked that we pull item number seven off the agenda, which he had placed there. Staff would like to develop that issue further before bringing it back, so we'll pull item number seven off the agenda. So we'll only have six agenda items tonight. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm very pleased as part of my report tonight to share with you that we had, starting today, our new interim finance director. He is here with us tonight. His name is Elias Joan, and he is our interim finance director. If you could just stand up, please.
Welcome.
So, as you know, our current finance director is out on a family medical leave, so this gentleman will help us get caught up, and the staff has been doing a tremendous job already, and I have every bit of confidence that we're going to get back on track with all of our scheduled budget duties and activities. So, Mayor, that is all I have for a report tonight.
Thank you. Move on to call the public.
Bruce Arlen.
Mayor Council, Bruce Arlen, Morning Star Road. I realize you guys had an executive session about the trail easement from Mark Stapp at Morning Star Properties, but a number of people came here. By the way, we have 92 plus another eight signatures in two days from the people in the community, not just our area, but on the other side of Spurcross, and it's spreading around, opposing this gift from Mark Stapp, and wondering really what it's all about. Two weeks ago, it came as a consent agenda, as you know, which was to be voted on without any input from the public. Now, I'm going off my script. Usually I do, but I do have a couple of things to talk about, so I'm opposed to it, very much so. By the way, gifts do not always have to be accepted, FYI. Also, this particular pledged gift is a motorized easement. It does not say non-motorized. That means it can be motorized in the future. You all know that. So, I consider this gift a Trojan horse trail. So that's cute, but it's still a Trojan horse, because in future, coming over that creek, despite anybody saying it's impossible, it's too expensive, it can't happen. Of course it can happen, and that easement is there. It happened. It happened before. Jerry Freeman had a victorious lawsuit in 2014 on this very matter, and won. The town paid for Mark Stapp's legal fees. Everybody knows that who knows about it. It's come back. Well, it's being opposed by many of these people here, and in two days, 92 plus another eight signatures, again, only the beginning of people who oppose the town opening up to the west, from the west to the east, for whatever purpose. But by the way, Mark Stapp did not have a gift of the land, because he has the biggest heart in the world. No, no. What did he get for it? So I'm trying to do this with great respect, but we don't know what he got for it. What did he get for it? You don't have to answer. We're going to find out. What did Mark Stapp get in exchange for giving land that comes over, that was already litigated one time? We know the original land, all of that 900-plus acres, originally was 1,207 homes that could be built. Somehow it went down to 283, and I think it may have been an access issue. I think that if this gift is accepted, voted on at this time in our history, in our political history right now, it's possible, and I don't know, because details always seem to be hidden, non-transparently. Maybe he could go back and try to get 1,207 homes again up there instead of 283. What if there was a property tax? And we know some people want a property tax. Some people advocated for a property tax. Some people went to Carefree and spoke about in favor of a property tax. By the way, theirs went down 80 to 20 down. They didn't want it in Carefree. So frankly, because we don't have information, because we don't have details, things are not shared. Executive sessions are, shall we say, a way of life in Cave Creek, and that's fine sometimes, but every time on all issues, we don't know what's going on. So, again, with all due respect, clearly I'm passionate on this. I live in the area, but everybody will be affected, and that's why we have signatures spread out in a radius in this town and growing.
Mr. Arlen, you're past your three minutes.
Well, thank you.
Would you finish your thought?
I could wrap it up. I could wrap it up. Well, you know, I said everything in a way. I oppose it. A lot of people here, I believe, oppose it. They'll say what they want. No one talked beforehand. So, thanks for your consideration, and I hope you do the right thing. But also, one last thing. We would like to know, unless you just kill the darn thing. I want it withdrawn, but if it isn't withdrawn, I would like to know, and I'm sure others would like to know, what did Mark Stapp get in exchange for giving land? What did he get for pledging a gift of land?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abraham?
Before we go on, I want to explain the light system there. So, the speaker in called the public has three minutes to say whatever they want. We cannot answer back because it's not on the agenda, and there's going to be a lot more on the Morning Star property coming up. We're going to have a public, what would you call it? An open house, a public open house on the project to answer questions where people will be able to come in and talk to all the people who are involved in this. That was decided, and we're going to have that in the near future. For those who are speaking tonight on this or anything else, the light will start, will go green when you're in the main part of your talk, and when it turns yellow, it means you have 15 seconds left. Is that? 30 seconds left. And then when it turns red, you should complete your thought and then take your seat again, so that everyone else has a chance to talk. We're very liberal here with our comments. I go to other meetings, and sometimes it's one minute, or it's limited to 15 minutes in total. We don't do that because we want to hear from everybody, and you're very welcome here, and we're anxious to hear all the factors that come into play here. So with that, we'll have the next speaker.
So Abraham Abey, Kahava Ranch Road. Thank you for taking the time. I'm glad to come, because you know, there is an essence here that is really, really at the big question. Cave Creek is like the last frontier. When we look upon our society, when we look upon the culture, it is under siege. There is corruption, there is violence, there is terrorism, and it all comes because of an expansion and population growth. This little town is such a beautiful little town. It has a heart. It has a visage of the past. So I come here to charge you to pay attention to the hearts of the people that are speaking, because they come out of love for this place. They come out of love for this land, out of love for this town. They don't want to see it destroyed. And if you have been elected as such to represent the community, I charge you today, please listen to the people that are speaking. Listen to their hearts, because they didn't come here to scream and yell at you, though that's what comes out, but they come because there's a heart in them. They want to preserve what it is. You know, when you look upon cities and nations, what has happened to them? When we open up the door to a mass population coming in, what happens to their community? With it violence comes, with it all kinds of stuff comes. We live here because it's a peaceful place. We live here because we love our neighbors. We live here because it's a glorious place to live. So I charge you, please don't give it away. Let it stand deep in your hearts that you are representing the community, and if you're representing the community, listen to what they have to say and oblige. I thank you for the time. May you truly honor the position that you have in front of the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathina B. I have to stick to my script or I'm going to pull off and not be concise. So, again, I'm here just as my husband and Bruce. I adamantly oppose to continue the extension of the easement. I'm also up on Kahava Ranch, I didn't say that. So I'm wondering what the intent is? What's the disclosure, and what's the impact? So the intent, there's a longstanding contentious history between the town of Cave Creek, Mark Stapp as president and principal member of Morning Star Properties, and Kahava Springs entity. Additionally, there's also the impact of the 1969 road easement that encompasses the corner of Morning Star and Old Stage. And these arguments and the history of it has gone back 10-plus years. And in agreement with my husband, what's the motto of Cave Creek? It's where the Wild West lives. And the citizens of Cave Creek live this motto through their love of the outdoors, the beautiful desert, abundant horse properties, riding tales, night skies, and I could go on. My point is, this is a quiet country bedroom community enjoyed and loved by all. And it is a community. People know each other. You're down the road, hey, how you doing? You know, passing in the car. Cave Creek has even made a point of not allowing big box or franchise commercial businesses to occupy space in Cave Creek proper. You've kept that all up on Carefree Highway, which is a beautiful thing. Scottsdale's motto is the west's most western town, but that's not true anymore. It's like a little mini city. It's a municipality, but that's gone. So with that, Mark Stapp, as the president of both those entities, has attempted multiple times over the past 10 years plus to gain access on the private easement that was established through that 69 agreement. This is a private easement for the benefit right now of just two parcels. I can give you the APNs if you wanted, but basically the Lowell property and the Freeman property. And I'm speaking today to adamantly expose and expressly oppose this deed of a gift. Majority of my neighbors and citizens also oppose this gift. Mark Stapp initially brought the deed of gift to council on the 5th of February, and the council wisely removed that from the agenda. That was a beautiful thing. Thank you for doing that, and postponing it to a different time period. Today, you had that opportunity for an executive session, which is good, and I know you had your attorneys there to discuss some of the legalities around it, which is good. The town's attorneys, that's my understanding of how I read the AR statutes that were referenced in that. So unfortunately, the public couldn't view it, and I agree with Bruce, full disclosure, full transparency, I think that's important in a community. So the deed of gift for the Morning Star Extension easement description does not really contain language that specifies that the trail is non-motorized. A portion of it is, because the Freeman property and the Lowell property have to get their cars up there, but then when it hits the, right before Freeman's property, it goes back into Morning Road property, and then that area is not currently motorized. But it's only a hop, skip, and a way from Kahava Springs, where Mark Stapp is, again, the president of that entity that owns up there. And I know that there was a lawsuit, and something happened with the excavator. I don't know if he's lost access to 24th Street, so I'm in agreement with Bruce. What is the intent? Why is he giving you this gift? Why is he giving us this gift? We don't need this gift. We have a ton of trails that us horseback riders can go on, bikers, hikers, and you're opening up 24th Street to Spurcross. You're building an entire loop around this town, and we don't want that. We like the bedroom community. We want the small town feel, and I know I'm running out of time. So I think there's more to it for what he wants, and I think that it would be good for the community to have a voice, and I'm appreciative that you are having open houses. I think that's important, because this affects the community everywhere. Bruce is referencing people on this side of the Kahava Springs that has signed, but I'm sure there's going to be others over on 24th Street. It's going to, even though they already have access, drive on 24th Street, it's going to be more traffic. People are going to cut the corner on Carefree Highway to get into town, to get up to the Tonto or wherever they want to go, and the traffic is quiet over there right now. I know progress is good. It's going to come, but it has to be the right progress, and it has to marry the sentiment and the atmosphere of what this community is, and you're being very patient. I appreciate that. So I adamantly oppose. I think the gift is disingenuous, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Melissa White Gatskin? Oh, Gatskin, sorry.
Without breaking down. Good evening. I would like to talk about the Morning Star gift easement. I am here to oppose this gift. It is not in the town's best interest. I've gone door to door in the last few days, and I have not come across one person that wants this, not one. I lived in the Chandler Gilbert area for the past 20 years, and I moved out here because Cave Creek is a special place. There's no other place like it in the valley. It's a beautiful, serene place where we can escape from the traffic and the busy city life. That's why we are all here. Isn't that why you're here? We know this gift is a Trojan horse for something else. Mr. Mayor, you are like the father to this town. We, I need you to be a protective father and to protect this town. Please keep it a special place. Don't let this get turned into a Scottsdale. Please don't let that be your legacy. Mr. Mayor, from what I understand, you have complete control of what goes on the agenda. I am asking you to protect Cave Creek and reject this gift from Morning Star LLC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody Powers?
My name is Jody Powers, and I live at 41902 North Old Stage Road. I'm at the corner of Morning Star and Old Stage Road, and I am speaking as part of the Cave Creek neighborhood up there to ask you to reject this gift from Mr. Stapp. It's not the first time we've tried to figure out a way to not have our privacy disturbed. Morning Star Properties Incorporated is the new name, but it's still the same game. So to the town of Cave Creek, I am the town of Cave Creek. I'm one of the neighbors of the group that is here, and again, I ask you to reject this gift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Powers?
Good evening, council members. I'm Dan Powers. You just got done listening to my wife. Now you're going to listen to me. Careful. All right. On that board right there, there's only one member that lives on the west side in the Cave Creek area. The rest of you guys live on the east side. If you let this developer ruin our area, I hope to God that the next developer builds it in your backyard, and every one of them people vote that it goes in, and you have to suffer like they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arlen.
Stacy Daniel?
Good evening. Hello, Mayor and council members, and thank you for listening to all of our passionate pleas. I'm Stacy Daniel. I live at 41740 North Kahava Ranch Road, which is a private road, one crossing south of Morning Star. We've lived here for 15 years, and during that time, Mark Stapp has tried to quitclaim us three times for easements rights, and it hasn't been fun. We've, we never wanted to landlock him. It's been resolved, but he keeps rearing his head every five, five years or so. We, my neighbors and I, maintain our road, and we lock the gate on the weekends. We've been doing this for about eight years, because ATV'ers come from Carefree Highway side, expecting to get through into town. And the reason we started locking the gates is because they were driving too fast. They were driving off the road. We'd ask them to slow down. They'd tell us to F off, brandish a gun, say I'm going to come back and F you up, trash beer cans, and just, we said we've had enough. My fear is that if you allow this gift of this easement to go on Morning Star, I did read in the minutes of the last session that it was for horseback riding, hikers, and cyclists. It doesn't matter. ATV'ers are going to find their way. They're going to try and come down. They're going to go up our road. They're going to go up north. They're going to come through. Where it's going to get out, and it's going to be a mess. I'm not sure where, what this, this gift of this trail is benefiting. Who's going to be using it? I mean, people aren't going to be parking on Morning Star and 52nd Old Stage. I mean, if they're coming from Spurcross Conservation or from a different area, they can, the horseback riders, the cyclists, and the hikers can come up our ranch, because we have one of those, those gates that horses can get through. There's really no need for this to happen on Morning Star. I hope that you take this all into consideration and realize, you know, a gift normally is, is a great thing. It can be fun, but this gift is not a gift. There's got to be a quid pro quo. It's going to open up a can of worms, and people, traffic is going to start coming through, and then it's, it's going to be, oh, well, it's already a road. Let's keep it a road on Morning Star. So I hope that you shelve this idea and don't go through with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justine Fritz?
Hello. Justine Fritz, Kahava Ranch Road and 48th Street. I'm here with my son today. I thought he'd like to see our local government in action. He's actually learning about Greek life in school, and today, just today, he told me he'd like to live in Athens, because in Athens, the government and the people work together for change. We do not want the Trojan horse trail. He is a third-generation Cave Creek resident, and I would like his children to enjoy Cave Creek and the beauty it has to offer, just like I did, just like my parents did. Like what Stacy said, we've really gone out of our way to make sure that horses can travel, that bicyclists can travel, people walking their dogs, and we've had a heck of a time with people on ATVs and motorized vehicles. We don't want to bring more people from the outside into our community, and the people living in our community are already accessing those spaces, and they're using those spaces already, just the way they'd like. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Council approval and acceptance of a deed of gift from Scott Wells for a non-motorized trail easement on APN 216-14-006, located at 7030 East Lone Mountain Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or does anybody have an issue with that and needs more information?
Mayor, I'll make the motion. This one has nothing to do with what we've been talking about tonight. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I, I think we need to discuss this because we're talking about our process.
Okay, is staff prepared to discuss this?
Is Luke here? So we'll have Luke Katzman, our Development Services Director, give a brief overview of this proposed acceptance of the deed.
Yes, thank you, town manager, mayor, members of council. This is a housekeeping item. There's an existing trail there. It kind of meanders in and out of an existing easement, and this is just recording a new easement that actually follows the existing trail across the property, and the owner consented, and is fine with it. So that's why we're bringing it before council tonight.
What is a cross street, Lone Mountain, and what's a cross street, the north-south cross street?
Offhand, I'm not exactly sure.
7030, that would put it?
So, yes.
Just south of Tom Darlington. So it'd be two blocks south of Tom Darling.
No, no, no. 70th Street, 70th Street and Lone Mountain. The address is 7030, so it's 70, 70th Street and Lone Mountain.
Okay, so where is it?
70th Street and Lone Mountain. Yes. Yeah, Lone Mountain Road North. So.
So it's on the eastern boundary of the town?
Correct.
The far eastern, but almost in Carefree?
Yes. Sorry, thank you.
I have just a brief question. I tried to find this, this piece of property, so I ended up in somebody's yard and tried to turn around, and I couldn't really see where that was. Can you talk about from that gravel apron, where, was it to the south and east a little, or?
Yeah, there's a.
I wish there was a diagram.
Yeah, I don't know if we've got the agenda there. I apologize.
Brian, put it up on the screen.
Is there, does he have a town map? Maybe we could put the town map?
On page 11 is the exhibit. It's, it would be on the west, west side of the lot.
I think they're looking.
So west of the driveway.
I think we're, I think the question was looking for where on the town map would you find it? Or if you can bring up the map of the town?
Yeah.
We Google Maps?
It's not private in 72nd.
That's what you have to say.
It's my street, 77.
Is it between? Discuss.
No. That's not here. 66.
So it's further.
Six miles.
He still lives.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'll, I'll go to the screen.
Great.
This is the trail here. On the west side of the boundary. Okay, so and where's the piece we're talking?
Yeah, can you zoom out?
This is the parcel.
Not quite that flat.
I think it's our IT guys. Make a planner out of them, yeah. So.
We're, we're looking, we're looking for some cross streets to get oriented and the big picture.
Second street, Lone Mountain.
Where, where Schoolhouse Road?
Yeah.
It would be west of this lot considerably.
So this is, this is almost to the, this is almost to the eastern town limit of town.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Does everybody get that?
My motion still stands.
One more point.
Yes.
Where's the piece of property we're talking about?
The one in the red square.
And where's the trail?
The trail is on the east side of that.
Oh. We have it to the main. So here's the driveway. The trail is west of the driveway. And where's it go? Uh, into the wash. Well, that's not publicly dedicated, is it? Um, I don't believe so at this time, no. I think we need to review this. Why would we take the truck town trail system and go into the wash?
Well, Lord, review.
This is an existing easement and an existing trail. So that's, but it's not a new proposed trail or.
Who uses it today?
I, Mayor, Members of Council, I'm not entirely sure. I'm sure it is used by neighbors so they have legal access and they're not trespassing. Is usually typically how trails become deeds of gift to the town.
Yeah, this is a gift to the town.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we, we have a second on the floor. So we're at the democratic process where we, it's not on the consent agenda. So we have to get enough information. We can vote on it. We can table, but we have a motion on the floor to accept it that is awaiting a second. Is there a second? I will second it then, so we can discuss it.
Yeah.
So at this point, you had, you had the motion.
Yeah, as, as Luke said, it's an existing trail that people are using. It hasn't followed the, the easement actually. The trail actually deviates from the easement, it sounds like. And it sounds like all we're trying to do is make the easement big enough to cover the trail that's actually there. So people are actually legally utilizing the, the public trail.
I had the second, so I'll, my comment's the same thing. This is on the eastern edge of town. It's nowhere near anything that is controversial. We have trails all over town. I ride them. I'm in favor of trails, so that's my second.
Could we get a detailed trail map posted on the website? I mean, the one you have right now is, is kind of an eight by eleven. We got a very.
Absolutely, we can do that.
People can see what we're talking about when we talk about these things.
Okay, we have a, comments now on, on this particular issue here.
Luke, has there been neighbor opposition to this movement of the trail?
No, sir, no, not aware of it.
Thank you. They're using the trail already. It's just gonna make it legal.
I just had a question. So this is a dedication by the property owner to continue the existing trail system over that piece of land? Right?
Yes, there's a previously accepted trail easement. The trail was put, put in place and this is actually.
This codifies it.
Doing an as-built easement to replace the previously dedicated one. The previously dedicated one was a ten-foot trail easement along just off the western boundary of the property, right on the, right on the property line. And the trail was put in off the property line and this easement now reflects where that trail was, was put in place by the owner.
So another question, Mr. Chairman. Everybody knows that our trails are regional trails. So there are horses, pedestrian and bicycle, but they're regional. They're regionally connected with the proposed down Carefree Highway and so forth. So I guess I still have the same question. I guess the trail extended, but it's going to a wash, which is private property and not publicly dedicated to another trail? Or am I wrong? In other words, I mean, I teach everybody points without what I'm doing, but if the trail is coming up, this parcel is ending right there. And there are some portions of washes in town that are publicly dedicated that we feed into. So my question is, is that the case up there? And if it's not, do the ways that the property owners know that their property that are washed, which we still own those with us on washes, are gonna be part of an expanded trail? So I mean, it looks routine, but, you know, already. Ernie, is there something that I'm misinterpreting of this?
You know, the, the trail system is built one, one piece at a time with, with, as, as the stuff becomes available and, and gets connected eventually. It, it doesn't all magically happen with the magic one. So I just see this as part of, since there's already a trail there and they're just wanting to get it legal. I don't see an issue with this one at all. You know, the, the, I.
Does it dead end, do you think, at the end of the trail?
Look, looking at this, at this aerial, it's kinda hard to tell. It kinda looks like it goes to the adjacent property to the west and then there's some goofy stuff there. But, uh, you know, if the people don't have a problem, the property owner has no issue with it. I, I certainly don't.
Well, I get the property and it doesn't have a problem. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing the dedication. But the public trail, the regional public trail is now ending on someone else's property.
Well, it, it, but if, if you look at that house, it, it could be to the benefit of the houses that's to the left of that. Look, coming off of that property and then going out of the neighborhood.
I'd like to know if our legal counsel has an opinion.
I only want, excuse me, I only want to clarify that there is already an express easement dedicated in two thousand and six there. The trail was not built exactly in that easement. So there is an easement. So if this was not approved, then the town needs to move the trail to the easement, which is not what the property owner wants. So there is an easement. So not approving it doesn't make any easement go away. If, I just, I don't, I just wanna clarify that. So there is, and it's expressed and it's recorded twice, actually. There's two recordings because it was incorrectly recorded the first time in two thousand and six. So it is, it just show up on everybody's title reports. Alrighty.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think I understand and I appreciate the explanation, but I still just have an innocent question, which is, at the end of a dedicated public trail, people are gonna ride beyond that and they're gonna be riding on undedicated open space that is owned by other property owners. So how does that work? I get moving it to where everybody wants it, but the washes are not public. I mean, I think we've all been down that road twenty-seven years, except for where they're dedicated as easements. So how does that practically work? For the town to take the trail? I mean, everybody's disgusted here. I get it, but I'm really trying to learn. If you take the dedication, even the attorney's looking down. I know I'm in trouble. If you take the dedication, what's the practical effect other than conforming physical and legal access?
The Mayor, Members of Council, I think the practical effect is the town is always looking for opportunities to extend and its trail system. It happens on a parcel-by-parcel case, unfortunately, and it's, it's slow, very slow moving, as is evidenced by the previous discussion tonight. And, and we also heard testimony tonight that people are allowing other people to cross their property. And sometimes trail easements aren't necessary because people allow them by their gratitude to effectively trespass. So I don't know really how to answer your question other than this is an area that we have several trail dedications in and around it. I don't believe that they're all interconnected as of this date and time. But to get the trail easement now is, well, we've already had this trail easement, but this effectively allows us to continue to examine and the possibility to expand our trail system.
Could we, this goes back to my question. Can we get a detailed map of the trail system? You know, one where it's at least this resolution where we can see where trails are and where they aren't? Because, you know, probably not right for us to have a trail that kinda dead ends on somebody's property and maybe the next neighbor that comes in doesn't wanna, you know, horses crossing their wash. So I'd like to get that just so it can get out to the community and people can see what we're actually talking about. I mean, this is kind of a transparency thing.
Mr. Chairman, just last comment. What Dusty just described, one of the things we've always tried to get over the years and Ernie knows this, is proposed trails. So I do get the fact that we've got this today and we wanna fill in, but I won't waste your time this evening with a long soliloquy on what we've done over the years. But we do need a map that shows intended, proposed or wished-for trails. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dusty? Please. Okay, so we're, we're at the point now, we have a motion, we have a second, so we can.
I have a question.
Okay.
Does this trail connect to other dedicated trails?
I don't believe the adjacent properties have an express dedication at this time. There are.
So it starts at this property, the answer to this property, the guy doesn't want it there. He wants it going in, in a different place and it ends at the end of his property anyway.
Right.
Other questions or comments on, on this proposal? Does someone wanna, now, we can make a motion to, sir, we, we're not having public comment on this.
Well, as the mayor may, may you might wanna know. Seventy thirties and we dedicated an easement, I think it goes east-west too, on the north side of the trail, along past seventy seventy. I don't know if that interests you or not, but.
Well.
Thank you.
Maybe it does. So we're, we're at the point now where we can, we can vote on this. If somebody wants to table this or something else, this would be the time to make that motion.
Okay, then I, I'm gonna request that we table this and that we get a diagram.
You have to make, you have to make a motion.
Okay.
You moved to.
I moved to table this and, and I have no problem with these trails. I love these, I use them. But I wanna know where this one starts and where this one ends and.
Microphone.
And a piece. Come on, guys, let me finish. I'm almost done. That's my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we, we have a motion here that would, that would table this issue and you're waiting for a second. Okay, we're, we're talking about the motion to table. Alls in favor, say aye. Oppose?
No.
Hit roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Elkman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Okay, the, the motion to table passes, so we'll bring this up with more information later. Uh, to the gentleman who, who knows something about this. Thank you. We're now on the general agenda with the presentation of the quarterly fire and emergency medical report. Can we get the air conditioner turned on?
Thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, thanks for having us here tonight. This is the quarterly report of the Fire and EMS services. It's provided here for the town and our activities for this last quarter, which is actually the second quarter of the fiscal year. With me tonight, I have Assistant Chief Dave Wilson. He's here to make sure I don't screw up like I usually do. So usually it's Chief Tobin that picks it up. He's here to do that tonight. And I do have to apologize, I did try to get a haircut, but it didn't come out very well. So I apologize for the way that this is looking at you right now because it's, it's not comfortable with me. But anyway. Yeah. At least I have some, I guess. Um, anyway, this is, as mentioned, this is the second quarter report for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We'll just kinda go through it pretty quick. You have this in your, this information in your packets. We, as you know, we track this by each quarter by monthly. So you can look at October, November, December and in the quarter, how many calls we get per quarter, the types of calls we get in the four basic categories, medical, fire, service calls and special ops. Special ops is primarily two calls. It's either the trail rescues and/or, um, we've had an awful lot of gas leaks this year, broken gas lines. So those are primarily the two special ops calls that we, we run this year. Um, underneath that, part of our agreement with Daisy Mountain is training. We have to make sure that their folks are doing the training that's required for us to get, like the ISO grading that we talked about here a few months ago, when the Cave Creek was able to go from a four to a three. A big part of that is training and so we track the training as part of our IGA with Daisy Mountain. So those numbers are on there for you. We put this up so that it's, it's easy for everybody to see. The top graph is the quarter, the incident types, with blue being EMS, yellow being, uh, special operations, gray service calls and red fire or orange fire, I guess. It's different on my map. As normal, as we've been doing since we've been tracking this, about seventy-three percent of our calls are for medical services, about four percent for special operations, eleven percent for service calls and eleven and a half percent for fires. So that's pretty consistent. The bottom graph is one calendar year. The twenty-three calendar year from January through December. I changed it a little bit, this, this report to show that it has been consistent. Seventy-four percent, seventy-four and a half percent are EMS calls, four percent again for service call or special operations, ten percent for service, eleven and a half for fire calls. That's the calendar year. What I included in this quarter report, because it's a little different, how this works out, and this is a question that have been asked of me in the past, is the next slide is three calendar years compared, one calendar year at a time. The first one was the information I was able to glean from Royal Metro when I first came out here before they stopped talking to me, but I was able to get a calendar year's worth of information. And then twenty twenty-two, as you remember, we started in January of twenty twenty-two with the service with Daisy Mountain opened the, the fire station, bought it and got it going. So there's calendar twenty twenty-two and then twenty twenty-three is this last calendar year. So you can see how we're tracking along with the calls. And we're actually, we're pretty consistent. We're pretty consistent on a number of responses that we go on and the types of responses that we go on. The big part at the bottom was the number of automatic aid resources that have come to town for the different events. Again, usually it's one or two vehicles, one or two pieces of apparatus that do that. But when we get a big incident, as we talked about earlier this year, when we have the flooding and stuff like that, you get a special operations. We're gonna get all the resources we need from the regional group, from the automatic aid system. And that's what runs those numbers up quite a lot higher for the number of units that we get. Here's the bullet points of the second quarter notes, what happened by month. And again, I'm not gonna read all those to you, but a big part of our focus this last quarter was this fire station, getting it up and running, getting the contracts done with the contractors, with the architects, getting them going on that. In November, we've participated with AmeriCopa County Regional Stuff. There's two regional ones that we've participated. One, one is the health group that started with the COVID, but has now turned into, uh, drug responses. And the second is the connection of the trails. We've been working with them, trying to make sure that the trail system that you've been talking about is properly marked, is connected from the county parks west to some areas over there that are gonna do some new trailheads to the Cave Creek, Spurcross, to the Tonneau Forest. We're making sure that all that's working. So that's, that's in progress now. And then we did in December and, and Dave's here to talk about it. Daisy Mountain did submit to us a complete training plan for the entire year, for next year, for twenty twenty-four. It gets us ahead of the, the curve. It's a very detailed, very good plan. And it will benefit us as we go on and we continue our certifications. Again, all the town permits have been attained for the fire station and the temporary facility. And we moved into the temporary facility just recently. And so things are going very well. And if you're driving up and down Cave Creek Road and you see what's happening over there, they are moving quickly on that station. The goal is to be done before the end of this calendar year. I've talked with the contractors, talked with the architects and said, this will be a very good Christmas present for the town of Cave Creek if we can have that thing done and let these folks move back into it before the end of, before the end of the year. And at the rate that I've seen them working already, since we relocated the, the folks, I'm pretty, pretty confident they're gonna make it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave for a little bit and he can talk about the training plan or if there's any other issues that you have for us or questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me tonight. Um. Chief Ford informed me that you guys have a copy of our training plan, including your packet. I just want to let you guys know that this is a fairly, well, a very comprehensive plan, including all of our mandatory trainings from NIOSH and OSHA and. All the way up into including our special ops training that, uh, we maintain to keep our certifications, so our folks can go out and, um, affect the rescues that we. We see, um, be it a hazmat, technical rescue, trail rescue, swift water rescue. Every month, Chief Ford puts together a, a training report, and in the slides, you'll see that, uh, there was about, I. Can't remember what the actual number was, but it was over seven thousand hours of, of training. If you could read that, I'm trying. Seven thousand hour to just company training, and that's just the company training, the guys getting out, guys and girls getting out and. And training to make sure they're proficient at their day-to-day jobs. Uh, but what you'll see is, is across the year, um, almost twenty-one thousand hours of training. Was. Was, was recorded. Um, that's just the recorded trainings that we make sure that they record in the, in our computer system to track that. In addition to that, our crews are constantly training, um, when they go out. Doing building inspections, um, area familiarization, trying to make sure they're always prepared, so. Uh, I just wanted to make sure you guys had a copy of it, you understood what it was, um, everything from introductory training, driver's training. NIOSH training, how to use our equipment properly, all the way up to succession training, and some of our specialty, uh, special ops training.
And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have them, about the quarterly report. Next time, it'll go back to the fiscal year. Jump back and forth a little bit on the second quarter ones. I think we're gonna try and show you calendar year comparisons, but. Mostly, we're gonna report on a fiscal basis, so we can line it up with the budgets.
Questions from council?
I have one. Are your standards as high as the standards in the rest of the Phoenix Valley?
Um, well, I can tell you that, um. We set a pretty high standard by creating this document. Um, a lot of departments in the valley have very comprehensive training programs, and I will not talk badly about any of them. Um, but what my goal was, was to show that. One, we have a plan for it, and two, a calendar that holds us accountable, that we make sure that we keep ourselves on track to make sure all of this mandatory training is done. Uh, a lot of times, and before we had this type of a document, a lot of times what would happen is we would truly intend to have that training. But months would go by, we'd forget about it, and we'd catch them up on the next year. So now that we have this type of document and we hold them accountable, and the training division. Make sure that they're holding the battalion chiefs on duty accountable, to make sure everybody on duty is trained. This set the bar fairly high for the rest of the valley.
If I can make a comment, the valley and the automatic aid system has minimum company standards and the standards that they have to meet. This clears it up. I was very, very pleased when I got this from these guys this year, which specifically calls out. What training is gonna be due when, and the amount of hours and things like that. So this is a very good report. I've seen a whole lot of those reports from around the valley. This is a very good, uh, training plan, and I was very pleased when they gave it to me in December.
I've got a question for you. Primarily EMS, when, uh, people get injured, I know that for trauma, you send them down to Honor Health over at, uh. Uh, seventeen and, and, uh. Uh, carefree hot, or not carefree, seventeen, one-on-one. Kind of a standard listing, depending on the type of injury that people go, because I've had a couple of people ask, you know, is there some? If my loved one gets injured or has a heart attack or whatever, where are they gonna send them? Do we have something like that?
There is a standard list. Every hospital has a certain capabilities and, and specialties, um, be it a heart cardiac, but.
Yeah, all I'm asking, can you post that somewhere on your, on your website, so if people want to know, and they don't get a chance to talk to you. They, they want to know where their loved one is, they can figure out.
We can work on that, when, but to put a listing out, cause like you says, each hospital is a little bit different, so.
I get it, I get it. I, I've, I've used your services before. And they were very good, I appreciate it, but it, it should, would be just nice to know when. They go to Abrazo versus they go to Honor Health versus they go to Thompson Peak or wherever. Just kind of, here's the criteria we use.
Uh, Mayor and Councilman, if I may, just, um, I had a lot of questions recently about. If these guys respond and treat, and they are gonna transport, um, several people have said, do I have to go to the closest facility? Which here is, might be Abrazo. The answer is no, as long as it's not an immediate threat or immediate issue, you can choose. The hospital to go through, as long as we don't take these guys too far out of service. We don't really want them going to. You know, the Veterans Hospital or something like that, if they don't have to, but.
I get it.
But otherwise, they get to choose that.
They're gonna go to maybe one of these two places, or sort of the likely, or something like that. I mean, it's just simple information for the community.
Sure.
I mean, it's one of those transparency things. Hey, this is a good thing, people can look it up, and it just makes our lives a little bit easier.
We can do that, put a little definition of each hospital and what they can do, that's fine.
More comment than a question.
Okay, well, this is your, this is your chance.
Dave, you know, we've come a long way since twenty-twenty in the east desert. With, with all this stuff, but I really appreciate the job that y'all are doing. It's obvious, um. A tremendous amount of benefit to the community through all the calls and, and, and your, your professional staff. I really appreciate the. The partnership we have with Daisy.
Thank you, Councilman, much, appreciate that.
Did, did you ever watch the movie Blazing Saddles?
Did.
Did you bring enough gum for everybody?
No comment.
Other comments or questions? Uh, I, I echo, echo the comments of Councilmember Bunch. I mean, seventeen hundred.
Different calls from automatic aid headed this way. I was up on one where I hurt, hurt an ankle, looked at, uh. Spur across, there's something going on, and there was Phoenix and Scottsdale and all that, so we had a lot, a lot of help.
Well, part, part of those types of responses, Mayor, and for the, the public. Is a lot of people say, why do you send so much? Well, we're also trying to protect our folks. You know, we're getting past the time when we would send two guys out when it's a hundred and twenty degrees and go hike four miles and put them at risk. We're trying to protect our folks also, so those are the resources you would need for a true rescue. If it's not that, then we can release those units back in and the system will absorb them. But it's, it's two things. It's protecting the community and serving the community. It's also protecting our folks that are serving us, and so. It's a big focus as we've gone. And, uh, and change that.
Okay, thank you. Others public comment on this?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the presentation of the query law, quarterly law enforcement activities report by the town marshal.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to present the quarterly report for the, uh, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement. Uh, we're gonna start off with traffic stops. Uh, this council has had a very large, uh, influence and. Was concerned highly about traffic, so I just wanted to make clear that we are, uh, gonna start with traffic stops. Um, there's been a tremendous amount of. Increase in reference to traffic in town. Uh, the town does have two traffic deputies, uh, Deputy Palmer. Call sign Adam four seventy-seven and Deputy Perez, call sign Adam four seventy-eight. Uh, Palmer's the Cave Creek car, and Deputy Perez is the Carefree car, but they also interchange a lot. By the way, Captain Luterno was out on sick leave. He apologized for not being here tonight. Again, these deputies have a, a tough job. They do car stops in town. They're pulling over speeders all the time, so, uh, they get a lot of action. Um, if you look at the map that I have up currently, each one of those dots represents a traffic stop in the town of Cave Creek. And, uh, some in Carefree as well. Due to the fact that we've had such an increase in speeding issues in the town core, they focus on town core traffic stops. And again, each one of those, uh, dots would represent a traffic stop in the town of Cave Creek. Um, vast majority of those are for speed, unfortunately. From October first through December eleventh, we've had two hundred and nine speeding stops in the town core. Next slide we're gonna have is the, um. Quarterly stops in the town of Cave Creek. October had ninety-three, ninety-six stops, eighty-three of which were for speed in the town of Cave Creek. Um, November had a hundred and sixty-one stops, one hundred and thirty-seven of them were again for speeding. December, we had ninety-two stops, sixty of which for speed. Uh, we did an interesting study, and we found that approximately seventy percent of those stopped. And issued citations for speeding were actually Cave Creek residents, which was surprising to me. Uh, you'd think that we would know our speed limits and we'd slow down a little bit, but, um, that's not exactly happening. So, we're working on education, and we're, and not everyone gets tickets, obviously, um, the sheriff's office is trying to educate people, um, as far as, um. What's going on. I did, um, ask for a, a couple of different, uh, numbers that are not on slides that I, I received at a later date. In October, there were approximately two hundred and fifteen calls for service that the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office responded to. Of those, a hundred and forty-three were nine-one-one generated calls or non-emergency line generated calls. And of those two hundred and fifteen, seventy-two were what's known as on-view calls. Uh, deputies driving through town, sees a suspicious person, stops, talks to them, those types of things. Uh, November saw two hundred and twenty-seven total calls. Hundred and twenty of those calls again resulted in. Um, calls to service, either nine-one-one or the non-emergency number. And a hundred and seven of those were what's known as on-view. Again, deputies on patrol, he sees something, he wants to stop, he wants to make contact, he wants to investigate. Suspicious vehicles, suspicious people, um, sometimes homeless people, sometimes just motors broken down on the side of the road. Uh, December, we saw two hundred and fifty-one total calls for service. A hundred and thirty-six of them. Were calls, again, nine-one-one or non-emergency, and a hundred and fifteen of those were again on-view. Deputies just being cops, being on patrol, seeing something and, um, addressing it. Um, looking back at. That closed out the, the quarter, but looking back at major crimes, um, they are down in our town from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. In twenty-twenty-three, we saw thirty-one calls for assaults within our town. Um, of those thirty-one calls for assaults, eighteen of them generated reports. The other ones, for whatever reason, um. There were no reports taken. Uh, sometimes that happens if, uh. The deputies arrive and they see that there was actually no crime had occurred, but it was reported as an assault. Um, sometimes they're verbal altercations, uh, which again wouldn't result in a, an assault report. So again, another reason why a report wouldn't be taken, and, uh, sometimes, uh, the parties were gone by the time law enforcement arrived. Lot of times if we see a, um. A road rage incident, someone will call nine-one-one. By the time the deputies get there, those people are gone. So again, it comes in as an assault, but technically, they're gone by the time deputies get there. Uh, burglaries were down from twenty-twenty-two, we had twenty-one burglaries. Twenty-twenty-three, we had sixteen burglaries. Of the sixteen reported burglaries, only seven, uh, resulted in reports being taken. And again, sometimes they're civil matters, they're not criminal matters, but they do get reported as burglaries. Uh, there were no home invasions in the town of Cave Creek during this, uh, calendar year, thank God. Cave Creek is, is a safe community. The sheriff's office does a very good job. We're very proud of what they do for us. And again, you're gonna see. More traffic stops on the side of the road in Cave Creek, because we are seeing a lot of speeding going on. Um, the numbers are coming down, and I think the deputies are doing a great job, and I applaud them for that. Um, I'm very happy that Captain Luterno has been assigned to our district. Under his leadership, I think that the deputies are definitely focused and doing a great job. And, uh, it's the second time in my career that, uh, Captain Luterno has been assigned to our district, so I, I feel we're very blessed to have him. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What is the speed limit through town? And what is the average speed of cars absent braking for, uh, stop signs, et cetera? Or pedestrians, I hope.
So the town core has a thirty mile per hour posted speed limit. We help remind people with that by having our speed awareness trailers out there. Um, tend to do a good job, but unfortunately, it's kind of like Big Brother has to be behind that sign every once in a while, which is why you'll see a deputy or myself on the side of the road. Running radar to help augment that. Um, the average speeds vary on, on days of the week. Um, if we look at the eighty-fifth percentile, which is, what, eighty-five percent of the vehicles driving or doing? Uh, currently in the town, the last time I looked at the numbers, we're approximately, um, thirty-seven, if I remember correctly. So a little higher than we would like.
And that's miles per hour.
Miles per hour, not kilometers per hour. Um, one of the things that, that, that we have to note. Daytime is different than nighttime, obviously, right? Nighttime, if we're leaving this council meeting, we're in a hurry to get home. Um, our speeds might be a little bit higher. Sometimes during the day, we have more traffic volume on the road, our speeds are a little bit lower.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A, a question, Adam. I, I love seeing then, um, the totals.
Yes, sir.
Especially on speeding, and I'm wondering, is there a way that we can track those?
Track those totals?
I hear you.
To, uh. To see how effective those stops are. Are, are we actually slowing down a little bit? I heard you say something to that effect, but.
Sure. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Councilman. We have the speed awareness trailers, which are actually tracking data for us, so even though we're not out there counting cards, looking at the numbers. Those awareness trailers are running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and are tabulating, um, traffic counts as well as speeds. Be more than happy to provide that data for you.
Thanks. I can see it.
Amazing technology.
Other questions? Um, I, I've gotten, uh, uh, complaints and, um, some of them. About a crime wave. Uh, the burglaries, the, and I know your numbers don't support that.
Not at all.
Seems like out there in the community, there's a lot of talk about the crime wave and a South American burglary ring that's, that's been in town. What, what can you tell us about that?
There is no South American burglary ring in town. I, I, again, I, I did tell you the numbers, um, burglaries are down in town. Of the, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, we had twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, we had sixteen. Of the sixteen reported burglaries. Seven required reports. Seven. So if you look at our town, you look at how many people live in our town, you look at how many people come and visit, drive through our town, walk through our town. Um, I think that the numbers are, are pretty, pretty low. Uh, unless, of course, it's your house that gets burglazed, which is terrible. But we do a very good job, I think. We try really hard, and I think those numbers are very low. I personally would feel very safe in our community. I do feel safe in our community.
Other questions for council? Okay, there is pub- there is public comment on this?
Bruce Arlen.
Ask you, uh, Marshal Stein, uh, I noticed, uh, and I wrote to the council about this. Uh, a huge uptick of wandering. Uh, I don't like to say homeless, some people are. You know, drug, drug addicts, drunks. I don't know what they are, but they're, they don't have a place. And they're walking around, huge uptick. Have you seen that uptick? And then I can tell you one twenty-second story about a. A wretched, unfortunate melded to the sidewalk. Guys know, I wrote you the letter, that I, I called the sheriffs to help rescue this person sleeping. Sprawled out on a, in front of the Episcopal church. What's going on with the uptick of the homeless people? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Arlen, I see human beings, I don't see druggies, I don't see white, black, Hispanic, I see human beings. And a society in whole has a lot of people that are disenfranchised, has a lot of people that are suffering right now. Uh, it's not Cave Creek, it's all over. We do see people that are transient in nature, walk through our town, ride bicycles through our town, but. We're not seeing any crime upticks in them, and I would disagree with, with Mr. Arlen, as much as I consider him my friend. That I'm not seeing a tremendous uptick in homelessness. I'm not seeing a tremendous up, uptick in transients. What we do see, um, just like any other jurisdiction in our, in our state, we see people that will come up. They'll sit outside the Walmart on private property, and they'll have a sad sign saying, my dog needs food. And if you give them money for food, they'll come back the next day. But we're not seeing them going out and breaking windows. We're not seeing them going out and committing burglaries, as the numbers tell you. We're seeing people that are trying to. Get people to give them resources. I may not agree with it, but it's happening all over our state. It's very, very. I feel very blessed that we in Cave Creek see that very rarely, very, very rarely. Um, if we do have someone in our town that needs to be spoken to, we make contact with them. We always offer to make sure that they have food, we make sure they have water. We ask them if they want any resources. They need medical, if they need. Um, a ride to a homeless shelter, they need a ride anywhere but here. And some take us up on it, some don't. A lot of the people that we'll see at the Walmart, for example, just because it's one of our larger businesses. They drive up in their cars. They park their cars, they get out. And they sit on the side of the road with a sign and ask for money, and again, we have a very, very generous community. We have neighbors, and we all feel that we're blessed, so a lot of times we give them something, and sometimes they come back. Sometimes they don't. I'll tell you that I've seen the same lady, um, that I once saw in Cave Creek. Down on Bell Road and Third. down on Bell Road and Third Street. I saw the same, and she always pushes a baby carriage with a child. I saw the same lady on Cave Creek Road in Beardsley, and I saw the same lady at Tatum and don't quote me, I think it was Bell Road. I've spoken to them. And sometimes they tell you that they're performance artists and that they're performing for people and people are giving them money for their performances. I don't want to get into semantics. I don't agree with it, but I'm just telling you that's that unfortunes the mindset. So no, in answer to Mr. Arlen's question, I'm not seeing an uptick in homeless people. I'm not seeing an uptick in druggies. I I see every once in a while, we do get someone wandering to town. We don't see any crime from them in general. We don't see any other than, you know, sometimes people don't like seeing them in our town because we're not used to it. I just see human beings that wander through.
I I would add that that this is a major regional issue, that the regional uh, association of governments has huge programs going on affordable housing and homelessness. All compounded by the fact that the court system shut down the zone in Phoenix, which has resulted in a scattering of people who are homeless. And I I've I've seen more people walking on the streets. I haven't seen them like you. I've seen them there's many problems and I've just seen them walking. Whereas uh, they might have been down in in Phoenix uh, in the zone, which uh, the city of Phoenix is uh, providing housing for them as a lot of other cities do. I know Fountain Hills does it, does it too. And uh, and uh, I know you've told me, Adam, that you often try to give them services.
Always.
Uh, when in tran- transfer both transportation and services to a service. Uh, when when we have someone in town who's unfortunate enough not to be able to take care of themselves.
We we had a young man living in the wash under a bridge and uh, took a lot, a lot of work. We were finally getting him into a transitional housing. Um, as long as he showed up, he was sober. He agreed to go to counseling every night and he worked every day. He had a home and he had a a job. And this is a man that was living in our washes. In fact, he was on Black Mountain. One day, we had a torrential downpour. He and his girlfriend got washed away, had to be rescued by the fire department. Um, then he was living in the wash and he was flourishing. He did really well when we got him into this transitional house. So I mean, a lot of these people want help, a lot of whom don't. He did want it. We got it for him and it worked out. Um, I wish I could say all the stories ended that well, but they don't. But we try as hard as we can. That's advantage of being in a small town.
Some may not remember this, but we had an issue with transients years ago and we came up with this wonderful, wonderful regulations on that. And got spanked real hard by the ACLU uh, in federal court, so we're limited to what we can do when this stuff happens. I know Adam remembers that.
Painfully so.
Okay, this is discussion only. We've had our public comments, so thank you very much, Adam. I guess you've got the next item too, council consideration, possible approval of a special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of March thirty, twenty-twenty-four to April seventh, twenty-twenty-four, per town code eleven fourteen dot zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, typo, it's March twenty-ninth till April seventh. Um, I took responsibility for my error on that one. I apologize. Um, I'm requesting that the town council approve the special event permit um, for the period of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three through April seventh, twenty, oh, excuse me, twenty-twenty-four. Wow, it's two typos in one day. I apologize. Um, through April seventh, twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Um, as required by the town code. Um, it is a a ten-day event. It's Arizona Bike Week. It's been going on for quite some time. Um, the Hideaway and the Roadhouse are the spearheading um, businesses in town that are uh, welcoming Bike Week to Cave Creek is the Cave Creek Bike Week as well. Uh, this year, the lane closures will be on Saturday, March thirtieth, Sunday, March thirty-first. One lane of traffic will be one lane of traffic will be closed in each direction to allow for vehicular parking, the motorcycles to park on the side of Cave Creek Road. Um, and then Thursday, April fourth, twenty twenty-four through Sunday, April seventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, again, we will have the road closures. Um, the closure would be set from Schoolhouse Road, approved from Schoolhouse Road up to uh, Bella Vista, I believe. And again, it'll be the right lanes of traffic, uh, one heading in the eastbound, one heading in the westbound. Um, I have heard the mayor loud and clear about traffic and the times it takes to get through traffic. I've done some research. I have found a new device new to us that will help synchronize our crosswalks hopefully and help expedite the crossing of pedestrians. And the synchronization will hopefully decrease the traffic um, wait times um, at the crosswalks. Um, the mayor has set a goal of five minutes. Uh, I believe we could achieve that. We are gonna try very hard to. Um, it is a new device to us. We're gonna deploy it on the first day of the event. It's out, actually, it'll come on Thursday. Um, so we'll familiarize ourselves with it. It'll be stationed at both crosswalks, one in front of the Hideaway, one in front of uh, Harold's. And those are the two busy crosswalks during Bike Week. We'll have a remote control. And when I say we, we are gonna draw straws to see which deputy gets that one. Um, probably not the marshal, I might say, just because they don't let me play with things like that. And uh, we will synchronize those crosswalks so that when Adam lets you go at the uh, Hideaway Crosswalk, Tom doesn't stop you at the Harold's Crosswalk, which I know causes a boat of contention with a lot of people, and I will try my hardest to make this work. Um, it is new to us. I've I've never used it before. I saw it at the open. I thought it was a a pretty nifty um, device. Scott still had positive feedback with it, so we're gonna go for it. Um, it's ordered, it's gonna come here, it's rented for this event. And uh, I think it's gonna help us streamline the crosswalks and I think it's going to make life a little bit easier for us. Um, in reference to the event itself, um, we have room for approximately fifty-five hundred occupants in the interior of the businesses. We have room for an approximate. This is approximation. I wanna preface this by saying, although I take full responsibility, um, Stephen in planning helped me with this. Uh, we have room for twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-six um, participants outside. Um, that's using the standard as developed by the fire departments. And uh, so basically, we have a capacity of twenty-eight thousand people at any moment. Um, as much as I wish I could tell you, we've seen that from a business standpoint, not as the marshal's standpoint, uh, we've never seen numbers that high. Uh, I would pray to God that we don't see that again. Um, you know, the event's a a big event. It's a ten-day event. We used to have the road closure out for the entire event. However, as you can hear from my presentation, the road closure will go into effect on Saturday and Sunday for the first week and then Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday of the next week. So it'll help minimize the delays in town um, for this event. There will be a very large contingency of Maricopa County Sheriff's Office deputies, on duty and off duty. Um, we're working in conjunction with Daisy Mountain Fire. Uh, Chief Ford has been instrumental in helping us with that as well as Chief Wilson. Uh, we'll have a unified command system, making sure obviously that everything smoke flows smoothly as it has in the past. Um, as far as the occupancy loads, um, throughout the event, most people in town will see me walking around. Uh, we're constantly looking at all of the establishments. We're checking to see occupancy loads. We're checking to see if there's room, if there's not room, and we're also watching the road constantly. So for example, last year, in the beginning weekends, even though we had the road closure from Schoolhouse Road to the extending east, uh, we didn't actually need all of that. So we were able to tighten it up. We were able to open up that lane for an extended period of time to help expedite traffic through town. And that's one of the things we do with the monitoring of uh, the event. And again, making sure that we have no issues within the crowd. Um, by walking around the event, you know, you'll see Daisy Mountain Fire is always walking around. You'll see myself walking around, some of the deputies walking around. Uh, we just keep our fingers on the pulse of the event just to make sure we're not having any problems. Uh, my goal is to catch something that's minor and keep it minor. We don't want anything to blow up into something that's not minor. Um, typically, this event, we have very few arrests, thank God, very few fights, typically a very, very orderly crowd, and we're very blessed to have that. There will be increased um, portable toilets at um, Hideaway as well as Roadhouse. Um, there'll be increased security on staff at both of those establishments. Uh, we will have a quick reaction force from the sheriff's office available in the event that something were to happen. We like to get in there very fast. Again, keep it minor and prevent it from um, exploding into something bigger. Um, again, we are trying out this new crosswalk device. It looks basically looks like a traffic bu- traffic light with arms that will come down to help expedite the pedestrians going through. Um, I do ask that you are very kind to me on this one. Um, it's the fir- well, it's the first time I'm doing it. Um, so I I feel confident that it's gonna help us expedite traffic. I feel confident it's gonna be very safe for the pedestrians. And at the end of the day, safety and public safety is our number one concern. Uh, this event's been going on for a long time. It's been an exceedingly safe event. And uh, I anticipate this year will be safe as well. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And uh, Mr. Stahl from uh, the Roadhouse in Stop in Hideaway is in the audience if we had to pick on him, I mean, ask him questions.
Adam, is it fair to say that you have increasing efforts, increasing success, increasing numbers? And if you were not there, the situation would be untenable.
I like the way that sounds. Um, the the event's gonna go whether I'm there or not. And I think that we're blessed to have the partnerships that we have with the sheriff's office in Daisy Mountain. I think that that makes our community much safer. I think we all work well together. Our operations plan for this event, uh, Chief Wilson will tell you is months in the making. Um, we all work together very, very well and Cave Creek benefits from that.
And brings in significant money from our businesses.
I'm not the bean counter, but I have been told that they do bring in tax dollars.
I have been told.
Adam, I have a a question. First, a comment. I love hearing your report. This is re- this really helps us understand. So as we serve, we can share this with uh, the folks that we encountered. I do have one little question and I bet it's small uh, in terms of impact. But along the stretch of the old town dump between, yeah, the fence, is there any chance that fence could get pushed to the north just a little bit so people can walk fore abreast along that stretch?
This is gonna be my favorite answer of the night, just for the record.
Alright.
I hope we're recording this. We have to ask Mr. Pingatour. It's his private property. I'll be more than happy to ask him. Um, I have a very good rapport with him. I know that he's working diligently to try and get his property open. Um, he has given us permission to put um, one of our um, counting devices that counts the cars that go through. So I will ask him if we could push that in a little bit. Last year, he actually did have a dog truck there, I'll be enough. So uh, he did move in the the fence on the east side of his property. So I will ask, sir. I'll I'll write myself a note because I'll hold it off for yet.
So that that fence is is uh, that fence is the limit of our uh, right of way? I hear, I see a nod from the town engineer in the back of the room, so. Uh, other questions?
Are there any efforts underway, Adam, for noise abatement? Is that even possible?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
I am convinced that I lose hearing every year they have Bike Week. Um, the noise from Bike Week, our motorcycles driving by. And the truth is, our noise ordinance doesn't apply to those motorcycles. The state um, Title twenty-eight deals with that. It's it, it's not a very easy law to enforce is the way I'll leave it. Now, if a motorcycle goes by and it has no muffler, then yes, we certainly could work on that. We do work with the restaurants. Um, we've been working harder and harder on the decimal readings of the restaurants, the bars, to make sure the outdoor noise volume from the bands are lower. We've had actually really good luck, oddly enough. Um, we didn't expect that, but we've had good luck with that, so we do try.
From the organizers of the restaurants, any comments to that effect?
It's like you said, Harley's, Harley or Harleys. And that's why people don't like drive to next door. And that's why a lot of them don't.
Will step to my microphone?
Yeah. But yeah, that's, I mean, a Harley's is a Harley. And that's why they have those those uh, mufflers on them and that. Most people, like you said, do not do not like to sit next to them in their cars. They either speed up or slow down, and that's basically for their safety. And that's why Harley did that years and years ago. It's tough to, you know, they even if they downshift, it's still kind of loud and that coming through, but it's just the motorcycles, you know, we get the as you'd say, the little pocket rockets coming through and they like to rev and you hear that meh whining through town. Those are even louder than the Harley, so.
Besides the bikers at the bar itself.
Oh, yeah, we've basically, you know, like you said, well, obviously, at the Hideaway, you know, we put up the big, huge metal fence that we've had down there to try to break all the noise going over into the neighborhoods and all that. Um, obviously, where we face all the music, it faces right at the bar. Um, again, and we try to keep the levels down.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, the more people there are, the more the music can be absorbed by the people. When they obviously start leaving, you turn the music back down. So it's kind of a vice versa thing. Um, but yeah, we've worked real hard and I think we've done a real good job every year. You know, it's been many, many years of planning this and and doing things every year. And we try new things every year. It's nice that he's trying this new thing with the uh, with the crosswalks and we'll see how that goes. And I hope we can get everyone going through. I mean, we just keep getting more and more people. That's people like it up here.
Right.
You know, more and more people are coming into town. They've opened up more uh, area for down Arizona Bike Week for people to bring their motor homes in. So the more people that come there, they realize that they can come up here, and then once they realize it's up here, they come up here during the day. And then they go back down there at nighttime. It's kind of how it works. So there are hotels down there. So we do appreciate Arizona Bike Week. But for us, it's they're more of a hotel there and it's nice to get them out of town at nighttime. I remember years and years back when we used to deal with the bands and stuff at nighttime and that. And it was, we just had more issues at night. We'll take all the day business. And uh, it 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 works out a lot better that way. And then they go back down there for the concerts, so.
Well, we appreciate uh, your collaboration with us.
We're always working.
Yeah, very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. Any last questions? Uh, there is public comment on this?
Janet Moore. Uh, Janet Moore, Cave Creek residents. Before I comment, I just want to give kudos to Paul Elkema for driving past that property. Good job. I hope that catches on. Um, but I would like to compliment uh, Marshall Stein because every year this event gets bigger and it just amazes me. There's never any real issues. Um, and I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we have to uh, thank the sheriff's department also for working with them. I'm not sure, but it, he does an excellent job and I think he deserves a lot of credit for uh, moving people in and out. And good job.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Okay, um, so we're at the point where we are ready for motion.
Be more than happy to do that.
Take over.
That turned it off and set them on? Oh, goodness gracious.
You notice we're having trouble with these microphones. Everything in here is recorded, so we keep reminding each other to turn our microphones on.
Alright, motion to approve the special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to April seventh, twenty twenty-four, per town code one one four dot zero two.
Second.
Mr. Elk, my head the second. Uh, you have the motion?
Yeah, I I was here when this, when this thing kind of started. It was when the uh, economy went south with the Great Recession and the guy that was town manager at the time called Mr. Bradshaw over to Hideaway and asked him if he could uh, kind of bring this back to us. Um, if we didn't approve this permit, these people are gonna be here anyway and we would not be ready for them. It would be an absolute disaster. This is one of those things where where our success has trapped us into the future.
Just the comment is, um, I think this is a good thing for our town and I appreciate the efforts to fit into that little town of Cave Creek. Thanks.
We heard people from the audience saying how much they love Cave Creek. Unfortunately, these people have caught on and they're right. It is a great place. Adam, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no further comments, uh, we had public comments, so you're looking, oh, we'll have the vote. I guess we gotta vote. There's, there is a twenty-three-hundred-dollar approval and that's under town manager, so there's nothing financial here. So we can do a voice vote. All those in favor? Signify.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Go on to the next item. Council consideration of resolution number Council consideration of resolution number 2024-03, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, proposing an alternate expenditure limitation presented by the town manager. And we'll have a public hearing after this.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So we're about to put up the slides. Many of you are aware that under state law, there is a alternative expenditure limitation, and this was put into place in the late 70s, early 80s. The legislature and the, and the public were very concerned about property taxes rising at a very fast clip. So at one point, they were able to get a constitutional amendment that amended the constitution that actually put a cap on how high, you know, property taxes could go up. But on, at the same token, they also did what happened in California, which was called the GAN initiative, which was an expenditure limitation as well. So on one side is the revenue in which property tax, which is not affecting this community. But on the other hand, was the expenditure limitation, which is defined by state law. So I'm going to go through a presentation. Every four years, you're probably familiar with this. We, we have what's called the home rule option. And so under state law, it's prescribed on how we must go through the extension of that if we wish to go through that process rather than follow the state law, which under state law, the state has its own state imposed limitation. So that I'm going to go ahead and get through and begin the presentation. Just some background on this. In June of 1980, the Arizona Constitution was amended, which put in place and imposed expenditure limitations on all local governments, school districts, and community college districts. The, under that law, the next year was established the Uniform Expenditure Reporting System. This is what actually kind of prescribed what that local spending would look like. The Auditor General's office was given the responsibility for implementing and overseeing this. This Uniform Expenditure Reporting System, which we'll refer to throughout the rest of the presentation as UERS. The UERS is not intended to restrict the town's ability to obtain and expend revenues from non-local sources like federal grants or state shared revenue or or other types of other revenue sources. In Arizona, spending limitations for local governments were established using the 1979-80 base year. That's the year that this basically went into effect. It allows for increases in spending based on population and other factors such as inflation. And then the Economic Estimates Commission calculates the spending limits. The Arizona Legislature then allowed some voter-approved exceptions, such as the home rule option or permanent base adjustment that allows the local residents to determine what their limitation should be. And then for those cities and towns that do not comply with this, there are sanctions and penalties, which typically involved possibly reducing or taking away our state share of revenue. So again, this is more history here. I'm not going to spend too much time going into it, but I would like to spend a little bit more time on basically how the process works. Each year, we receive from the, the Economic Commission their estimated expenditure limitation. And basically, this is the state imposed limitation. And as you're going to see down the bottom, if we did not have voters consider this every four years, we would be limited to about $6 million of expenditures a year. So $50 million, we would not be able to expend. So the, the, the basis of this is basically that cities and towns, if you don't have your voters approve this, we're really limited to what our state share revenue is and you know, debt service and things of that sort, plus your operating budget, based on a formula that was determined 40 years ago. And we've been very fortunate since 1999, which was the first year that this went into effect, the home rule option. Voters have approved that every four years since 1999. The home rule option may only be voted on during the regularly scheduled election. That is when council members are running or being nominated, must be approved by voters. If the home rule option is not passed by voters, the town must adhere to the state imposed limitation. So as I showed you in the example before, we would be limited to approximately $6 million a year. And then the, the next time you could attempt taking this to voters would be two years later. So what happens after we have these public hearings and we go through this process? Well, the council would approve a resolution, which then would be submitted and given to the Auditor General. The Auditor General would conduct a detailed analysis. And before we could even take this to the voters, we'd have to have the Auditor General give us the approval. And then we have to have that completed before we can even place this on the ballot, and we have to have that done before the publicity pamphlet, which is what explains this particular referendum to the residents. So again, the last time that this was approved by voters was in 2020. Our current home rule option expires in June of 2025. In order for us to continue with the higher expenditure limitations, we would need to get voters to authorize that. So essentially, the process requires two public hearings. Tonight is the first one. We'll be coming back on March 4th for a second public hearing. And following the second public hearing, the council may consider approving the resolution, referring the home rule option to voters. Again, what's really important to note here is we could have $50 million or $100 million, but if we don't have the voter authorization for the home rule option, then it's like basically you have money in the bank that you can't spend for services that provide the services to our residents. So it's, it's designed for a good purpose, which is to ensure that cities and towns and other local governments do not, you know, overexpend or continuously raise taxes and other fees to, in order to provide services to the community. So it's a checks and balance that's in place that the state has imposed. Assuming the council approves resolution 2024-03, the town is required to submit the resolution proposal, as I mentioned earlier, before the printing of the publicity pamphlet. This is kind of repeating some of the other information. I do apologize. So just for clarification, make sure we're very clear. The town is not asking for a new tax. The alternative expenditure limitation is not seeking to increase town revenues through increased taxes or additional taxes. And the town is asking the voters to allow this town to spend the revenues it already has collected. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the Mayor and Council may have. And by the way, this is typically done by a finance director, and I did not want to put our finance director on the hook for doing this tonight, since he just started today. He's done this many times before, though. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this topic.
Well, I'll ask the questions. What would happen to our fire service if we didn't approve home rule? What would happen to our roads? What would happen to our water? What would happen to our sewer? What would happen to our traffic enforcement?
It would shut us down, basically. If we can only spend $6 million, we'd have to make some very severe draconian cuts to services that the residents today enjoy.
Yeah, it'd make the town uninhabitable, basically.
Exactly.
We wouldn't have water, sewer, police, fire, roads, you name it.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions? There is a public hearing on this, so the public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments?
I have no one wishing to comment.
Public here, are you going? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. And there is no other action at this time. I guess this will come back to us March 4th.
That is correct.
Okay. With that, we're on to the next item. Council consideration of ordinance number O 2024-02, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, amending the town code Title III Administration, Chapter 30 Town Council by amending Section 30.02, entitled Term of Office, to provide for a voter-approved four-year term for mayor and four-year staggered terms for council members, commencing with the Terms of Office commencing after the general election of November 2024, and two consecutive four-year term limits, presented by the town manager and town clerk.
Mayor and council, this ordinance is here before you for first reading. The ordinance would amend town code and would provide for a voter-approved four-year term for mayor and four-year staggered terms for council members. To repeat what you said, it would commence with the Terms of Office after the general election of November 5th, 2024, and would potentially include two consecutive four-year term limits. This ordinance, with any changes, will be returned to council on March 4th for second reading and possible approval. If approved, this thing, this language will then be forwarded to Miracopa County elections, to be placed on the July 30th election ballot for voter consideration. This ordinance would not be effective unless and until the qualified electors of the town approve it at the July 30th election. And if not approved by the voters, it will automatically be rescinded.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I will try.
Questions? So if I give it back to you, we will approve, if we approve this amendment, then it has to be sanctioned by the voters. If it's not sanctioned, it's void. So it is basically a referral to the voters for this.
That is correct.
The four-year staggered terms and term limits, which are both included in this.
It's either approve it as proposed, or if they do not approve it, then it just reverts to what we currently have.
So there is, any other questions for the?
Well, I just have a comment.
Well, okay, we're still, that'll come after the back of the motion. Yeah, thanks. Seeing no, no questions, there is public comment on this?
Janet Moore. I do oppose this. I oppose term limits. If I'm reading this right, is if there's still term limits in here, I feel that this town is too small, and we don't have a lot of good people that want to do your job. So I think not allowing them to run for more than, you know, to cut off their term, term is, is not good for the town. I also would like to keep it at two years. I have a big concern for the four years. I've sat in many council meetings, and I know that previous councils have worked very hard to get all your building codes and everything in order, and it was very painful meetings to sit through. It was very painful for staff. I'm very afraid that if everyone is seated for four years, that they would have time to do some changes that may not be good for our codes, and they would not be worried about being up for election. So I, that would concern me, and I do think we'll start seeing recalls as well, which is costly and kind of a waste of everyone's time. So thank you.
Thank you.
David Phelps.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. I chimed in when this first came up, and I said that if we're going to have the four-year terms option, that I would like to see the term limits. So I agree with Janet in part that the two-year terms would actually be a better benefit for the town residents. It will, it has a better logic flow to why you don't want to recall people after six months unless it's, there's some kind of heinous crime, even though that we've had the longest-serving council members partake in recalls. After people were here only six months. So there's no guarantees, but I think the four-year terms will lead to more recall activity. I don't think we're ready for it. I don't, especially don't like the way we've got three items bundled together. If you really want to give people choice, put each item up there, let them stand alone. If the mayor's going to be a four-year term, let the people vote on that singularly. Let the people vote on the council member's staggered terms singularly, and let them vote on the term limits singularly. You may come back with two-year terms with, you know, the inability to serve more than two terms without taking a break. And I don't think that would be such a bad thing. I think if your desire to still serve after two terms can ride out a wave of taking a two-year break, may give you some clarity when you step away. So I would encourage you to not approve it the way it is. And I, you know, good luck on sorting this one out, but I don't like the bundle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor and council, if I may, the items, when they go on the ballot, would be separated out. For the ordinance, they're under one ordinance, but on the ballot, they would be separate for the voters to vote on the mayor.
So there's three separate votes on each.
They would actually be two, but for the mayor, terms change from two to four, and from council members to change the terms to four. The third item, there's state statute. I get, I will let Kristin explain that part.
Sure. The state statute that allows for staggered terms specifically requires an election. So the first two items, the mayor's four-year terms and the staggered council member terms are required by statute to go to an election. But if there isn't a statute requiring the town council to refer a matter for an election, then it can't be referred for an election. So the term, the term limit, that's not required by statute to go. So that the council doesn't have authority to ask the voters their opinion about the, the term limit. That would just be a decision for you all. So the, the term limit wouldn't go on the ballot. It would just be the two questions, mayor four-year term and the council member four-year terms.
But it would be part of the language that would go out in publicity pamphlet. So those voting would read that if they vote for whoever to have a four-year term, that there would also be term limits.
I gotta reflect that back. I'm not sure I understood all that.
Okay, I apologize.
So, so on the ballot would be the, the, the mayor and the council four-year terms?
Yes, that's, that's two separate.
But the council has control over term limits? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's not something that is required to go to the voters, to be referred to the voters. So that's something that's, that's up to you all. It can't be referred to the voters. You have the authority to make the staggered terms and refer that to the voters. But the term limit is just a provision of the town code, so that is up to the council's discretion.
So if we pass this, at whatever point we pass this, and the, the four-year terms are not approved, but the term limits have been approved by council, means we're stuck with just the term limits and not the four-year terms?
Um, no, I think that's handled by Section 3 of the ordinance, where it states that if the first two, it actually, it's stated right now as, and if the mayor for your term and the council member for your term are not approved, then the, the ordinance is automatically rescinded. That's the current language of this draft ordinance. They would, both of the questions would need to be affirmative in order to have the term, in order for the ordinance to move forward.
So effectively, the voters will, will rule on all three items?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Even though they won't appear the third one on the ballot.
I see.
But it will be explained in the pamphlet.
Okay. Well, we probably expect a lot of questions on those. Questions?
I have another public comment. I'm sorry. Bruce Starlin.
Thank you. I think there is a little confusion. I'm a little confused. You were confused, not understood. And I think tonight's probably not the night to decide on something that's confusing. I wrote some things down here because I'm, I'm actually undecided, but I want to ask some questions or mention some things. Two weeks ago, I don't think there was a rationale for putting this on the agenda other than let the people speak. There was actually no argument why this is a good idea, if you recall. Mr. Mayor, you put it on the agenda, but I don't think you Mr. Mayor, you put it on the agenda, but I don't think you gave an actual argument for years. Why? It didn't happen. I don't think there was. I may have missed it, so correct me if I'm wrong. But the rationale to do it is, is also unclear. Other than to let the people speak, but speak why? Why should they speak on a vote that they, that wasn't made exceedingly clear? Why is it a good idea, in other words? And I like the two years. Again, I'm undecided. I like the two years because it gives other people a chance to serve who want to. Four years is a hell of a commitment for a non-paying job. Also, this one, people pull packets and they're running right now for council, mayor. There's a opponent to the mayoral office. And they all pulled packets on a two year basis. Now suddenly, if this passes at the same election, now there are four years. Doesn't add up to me. If you were going to do it and it did make a lot of sense and it was going to be wanted by the people, I would say skip this election and do it next time. But why four years now? Again, people pull packets with a two year expectation and think that might, I think that's it. Well, I made sense to myself anyway. Thanks.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, so we're at the point now where we're looking for a motion on this.
I'll make the motion. Except that I do have a question. Do you not want to respond to any of Bruce's comments?
I'll respond when they, when I make my comments.
Okay. Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number zero two zero two four dash zero two. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cape Creek, Maricopa. Should that say Maricopa County, Arizona. Amending the town code, title three, administration, chapter thirty, town council. By amending section thirty dash oh two, no, dot oh two entitled Term of Office to provide for a voter approved four year term for mayor and four year staggered terms for council members. Commencing with the Terms of Office commencing after the general election of twenty twenty four and two consecutive four year term limits.
Second? I, I am the second. That's what that was like. Okay, you had the motion, so.
I am in favor of this motion because I think it provides stability for this town. The way that we're organized now is that we're all up for reelection at the same time. Should there be a complete turnover of all seven of us, it's complete chaos in terms of stability for the staff and for our residents, for a group of people who have never served and know nothing about the current makeup of the town and how we govern. And in fact, I look at it as a positive rather than a negative on recalls. I look at it as let's keep good people in. We haven't had a recall in, as long as I can remember. What year was that, Janet? Do you remember? Twenty, twenty twelve?
Thirteen?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen, ten years ago. We have had exceptional councils since then. We have not had the divisiveness that has occurred in previous decades. And so from my perspective, it adds stability to our town. It adds security for our council and the staff to be able to work with the same people for a quantity of time that's known. And also, it's not all of the six council members being elected at the same time. That's the purpose of staggered terms. Three of us who, I think as devised in this motion, who received the fewest votes only have a two year term. So they will have to run again. And at that point in time, they may be elected to four years. So there is a science to this. Carefree passed this. I think it was based on the carefree language. And their voters overwhelmingly approved it despite overwhelmingly not approving a property tax. So there is rationale, there is purpose, there is a positive element to stretching out our limits, our, our terms to four years. And that's why I'm in favor of it.
Bruce, here it comes.
So. I, I have a comment.
Well, you know, I had the second.
Okay.
The reason is good government. And let's start with just the fact that it takes a while, at least two budget cycles, I think, for new council members to truly begin to understand the complexity of the budget process, the rates, the financing, all the other things that go into it, just the finance portion of the town. Without the public safety, without the roads, without the sewers and the water system and all the other things. It's a really complicated town that we're not the little town we were thirty years ago. If, if a two year term provided good government, we missed the boat somewhere because I think that I, I, I'm absolutely positive that our finances have never been stronger now. Our water's never been in better shape. Our sewers are in better shape. We're, we've, we're putting in four times the amount of money for roads. We're going to catch up on our roads very quickly here. Everything in town, we've got, we've got police protection. We are the safest we've ever been with regard to fire after some disasters. So this town is on the move up. It's time we grew up and had a, a council that kept its experience between, between elections. And I just want to point out that one year after I've been mayor for one year last or in, in, in December. And already we're running for office again. And this is very, very expensive to run for office. People have spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to get on this council, which is a volunteer job. It's expensive to buy signs. It's time consuming to get signatures to campaign. It's time consuming for your personal time. The people who serve up here give up a lot. And I think part of the load is having to run for office every two years. It, it really, I, I, I've told people recently that going out and getting the petition signatures alone is enough to convince me of the four years. The vice mayor talked about the continuity. We need continuity in this town. We need to have council people who understand the government, what's going on, something about the past. And I think the four year terms does that. And well, those, those are the reasons. I, I think it's, it's been, I, I've heard no one say that four year terms are bad. It's going to cause anything. And I think the, the town's two year terms have produced no tangible results that I've seen, other than you're in elections all the time. So that's my reason for being behind this. I'm going to be in favor of it. No, no, what, the, what? No, you cannot respond, Bruce. You, you, you had your turn. Now it's, now the council's doing it. Yeah.
Let the voters decide, but I see a balance. Bring in new ideas, but have some stability. I think that kind of balance really benefits the community. And I agree with the comments that are made by the two previous speakers.
According to the home rule thing, we have five thousand two hundred and thirty nine residents in town. If we can't get out every two years and get a hundred and fifty, two hundred signatures, you know, we're pretty sorry individuals. No, I mean, it's just a fact. We're a small town. There's no reason why we shouldn't, shouldn't have elections every two years. Everything is running smoothly. I would make the argument that if everything's running smoothly, why would we change it? I mean, it's, it's going pretty well. If you don't like people, vote them off and you get that opportunity every two years. I, I don't see a need to change. So that's my personal opinion.
My comment is I wonder, I mean, you hear a variety of opinions here about the, the length of our service, whether it's, you know, four years or two. Is there anybody that wants three or more or what? And I don't, this is a, this is about who actually sits in these chairs to represent the folks in town and how long you get to sit here. And some people have been here a long while. And in some cases, that works. In some cases, you wonder. And when that happens, we all vote on change or whatever it is. So it seems to me that there's a level of transparency that about just setting this up. I, I don't quarrel with term limits at all. I think that's important. But kind of the way this is happening, this is a model and it's a binary vote. Either we vote, the town votes for it or not, and it goes away. Maybe it's something that we ought to discuss a little more. So I'm at this moment, I'm undecided on this.
Other comments, Tom?
I won't redo what you sat through last time. We thought we were reforming in the early nineteen nineties. As I told you, the mayor was chosen behind closed doors. The public did not have any access to that decision-making. It was ruckus. And in fact, maybe we should look at the vice mayor, you know, running for office and being elected. So then that person could serve in the event there was something that happened to the mayor. So there's a lot of different permutations. This is the Politicians Protection Act. The reason it's here is because the two of you who were the last highest vote getters in the last election presumably could win again and you will automatically get four year terms. Four year terms is half pressing the flesh that we have in two year terms. And we've already established the fact that it's a nuisance and the signatures are irritating and the signs are expensive and so forth. In politics, of course, once you can fake sincerity, the rest is very easy. If this is good government, which I personally don't think it is, what you're proposing tonight would have a two year delay. So you and you would not benefit as the last highest vote getters into automatically walking into four year terms. And then when you run again, you get eight years. So, and by the way, the Carefree initiative came from the voters. It did not come from the council. The voters have turned this down once before. And my faith, like yours, is with the voters. I believe they'll turn it down again. It's sad to see a lot of the reforms that were done in ancient history, which nobody wants to talk about, but were significant at the time, coming back again and again and again. Unless there is a demonstrable reason for doing something. You mentioned institutional history. That's the staff's job. That's not the members' job up here. Now, term limitation, I agree with others. Term limits is a bad idea. We have two examples here, to almost two decades for two of our members. So if we had had term limitations, former mayor Bunch would not be here with us tonight to provide the institutional continuity. Same thing with Mr. McGuire. So the term limitations is double edged sword. I was friends with Representative Polly Rosenbaum at the state legislature. She served for forty five years. That district made a choice every two years, which the state legislature still does, as well as the US House of Representatives. People stand for election every two years. So I just think this is going to be obvious that as somebody once said to me up here on this dais, Tom, the council is four. Of course, I count seven, but the comment was accurate. The four is all that is necessary, just like this vote coming up to change the course of the community without really any consensus building, collaboration, discussion, debate with the other three. I'm sitting here on a council as a former mayor where I cannot get something on the agenda, not because of Mayor Morris, but because the code that regulates agendas was changed three times to give sole discretion to the mayor if what's on the agenda. When I was a mayor, there was no traffic cop. There was no three minutes. I'll stop here because I can hear the size. This is not what it purports to be. And I believe that people in this community are a little more awakened than they were in previous days. And I had previously bet a car wash. I won't do that now. But I believe that staggered terms is not a good decision for getting your best people to come back if they so choose or have the desire to continue to serve. And I think four year terms is half the accountability. And I'll just say one last thing in closing, because I said it last time. I don't know if anybody heard it. The reason you want staggered terms, four and three is that you get slates. It is so easy to get three people elected every two years or four that the control of power in a small community where this is supposed to be volunteer service is almost certain. We had a newspaper before you guys, some of you, we had a newspaper that ran slates all the time. If you go back to three and four, and we haven't had recalls lately, you are begging the deliberate creation of a permanent pass the baton power control of four seats on this council. And with the amount of hundreds of millions of dollars of development coming in from the state lands and infilling of this community that need to be looked at in an open and proper procedure. I just think that when somebody says, trust me, I always try to find out how much change I'm getting or how many fingers I have left in my hand. So if you really want to do good government tonight and satisfy your cranky colleague here, put a two, two year delay on this. Do this, but don't benefit yourselves personally. That would be my suggestion or request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if I can answer that request. I'm very happy to stand on my record, Tom. I'm very, I, I think it's a record that is outstanding. I had a, quite a hand in many of the improvements in this town. I, I think my volunteerism is apparent to anyone who wants to look for it.
I will respond as well, if you don't mind. Unless you want to speak. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
This is certainly not a personal agenda for me. In fact, I will put it on the record that I do not intend to run again in two years if we choose to go that route. I believe eight years is plenty of time for one person to commit to this town. I also believe that I have made significant contributions. I'm very proud of my record. Bob and I work very collaboratively together to save our water supply among all the other things that we've done together. So yeah, I'm proud of myself. I think my community is proud of me. And I think that's why Bob and I have consistently gotten the most votes. There's nothing to be ashamed about by getting the most votes. I'm very proud of that because we've proven ourselves as dedicated public servants who are not earning one penny to do this as all of us. And I get that. So to accuse us of doing this for some personal political reason is so far off base. It's insulting. I'm primarily concerned about the stability of our local government. And for us to change every two years is instability for the staff and for this council and for our residents and for our businesses. They do not know how to depend on people who turn over every two years. So I think it's, it's a good move to go to four years. I would agree that we could postpone it until twenty twenty six. And therefore I would not be obligated to four years. If that makes you trust me a little bit more, Tom. That's my comment.
As the poor guy sitting here who got involved because of a neighbor dispute and the town taking sides in it, had I beat the crap out of him, I'd have been out on parole by now. I've been here, well, up here, no, it'll be nineteen years in, in June that I've been sitting in one of these seats up here, either vice mayor, mayor, council member. And we've been through a lot of turmoil and, and a lot of the turmoil that, that occurred was, was the aforementioned recall. And that recall came about from a slate that ran and the slate ran because they were trying to kill a project that was never actually going to go anywhere, but the people got all excited and got all emotional and they, and, and voted these folks in. And they really weren't the best council members that we've ever had and they got recalled. I see this happening where if you, the only time you would have a, a, a possibility of, you have a slate, a possibility of a slate every two years now, depending on people's emotions. With the enactment of, of this, you would only have possibility, possibility of a slate every four years. And it would have to be all four of them that were running, the mayor and three council members. and it would have to be all four of them that were running, the mayor and three council members to be able to take things over. I'm gonna support this. I, I, I think it's a good idea. Had, you know, like I say, uh, be nineteen years. I've been through nine elections. I, I absolutely love serving and I hate, hate having to go through the elections. Never taken a dime for, for a, a uh, campaign contributions, never, never have accepted them because I wanted, didn't want it to look like I, I belonged to anybody. All my decisions are based on, on, on my own, but it's been expensive. I had to, had to defend myself as mayor. I, I think I probably spent twelve or fourteen thousand dollars over the, over the nine elections, just, just for the privilege of sitting here. It's too dang, it's too damn expensive to do this. Every two years is nuts. I think this is a really good idea to go for this.
Okay, everyone had, he wants, many rejoinders? Okay, and, and again, this is just to refer to the electors. This is democracy in action. We have a, uh, I guess we gotta take a voice vote on this. There's no sense.
Not as well.
Yeah. Or, I mean, a roll call, excuse me. You gotta go to, take a roll call on this, so we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Councilmember Ogerton?
No.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkama?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Motion passes five-two, five-two, therefore it is referred to the voters. Oh, is that?
It'll come back.
It'll come back. Okay, we have one more shot at it. Um, next thing on the agenda is the council consideration approval of ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-four-dash-zero-one and ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, pertaining to the National Flood Insurance Program, adopting the referenced, the reference revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps and flood plain management regulations, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing penalties presented by the town engineer.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, let's talk floods. What is on the agenda tonight is the result of a meeting between the Arizona Department of Water Resources and the Flood Control District of Maricopa County and myself, uh, where our ordinance is reviewed based on the requirements for the National Flood Insurance Program. And the state marked up our town ordinance oh, twenty thirteen dash oh-four. And really, the new ordinance updates effective flood studies and flood insurance rate maps and modified listed Arizona revised statutes, the current ones in effect. Uh, changes, uh, changed the flood management regulations from two thousand eleven to the two thousand eighteen revisions, and that's it. So very minor changes, really a lot of updates of dates uh, between the oh, twenty thirteen oh-four ordinance and the one we present to you tonight.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, seeing none?
But there is.
You have one. Is this gonna affect insurance rates?
No, it's not. Uh, the same insurance rates that we have right now will stay in effect. All it's really doing is adopting the twenty twenty-one uh, flood insurance map.
Just language change.
Yeah, just language change, dates change.
Okay, there is public comment on this?
I have no one wishing to speak.
No comment? Uh, so at that, we are looking for a motion then.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number zero-two-zero-two-four-dash-o-one. An ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, pertaining to the National Flood Insurance Program, adopting the reference revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps and flood plain management regulations, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing penalties.
Second? Uh, you had the, you had the motion, so you.
Did somebody make a second?
Yes, me.
It just makes logical sense. Thank you, Hal.
Um, I, I agree. It's wise thing to do. Other, other comments?
I do have a comment. Um, I really appreciate that we're looking at this ordinance. And I want to remind the mayor and our town manager that in our strategic plan, it states clearly that we're gonna look at three to five ordinance reviews and revisions over the course of that process. And um, so I don't know how this one came to the forefront, but it'd be great to have a discussion soon about which ordinances we notice are causing confusion.
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Okay, so uh, this is not financial, so we can do a voice vote on this. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. We're at the end of the agenda. Number seven was pulled.
Motion to adjourn.
Go.
Motion, many adjourn. Thank you.